Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of Belbrook City Council. Today's date is September the 9th, 2019. If you could join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, if you could call and roll.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. McGill.
Here.
Mrs. Mittelstetter.
Here.
Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Here.
Dr. Van Beltheisen.
Here.
Mayor Schwaller.
Here. Does anyone have any changes or corrections to the regular city council meeting minutes of August the 26th?
None, ma'am.
Seeing none of the minutes are approved as written. The mayor's announcements aren't anything special tonight other than there's a lot of things going on in Belbrook this weekend. The 14th is going to be a busy day for downtown Belbrook and I'm sure we'll hear more from the city manager in her report tonight about it. Okay?
Yeah.
Tonight, we do have a special guest, Karen Putterball, Executive Director, Green County Council on Aging. Karen, welcome to Belbrook and the luck room is yours.
Thank you. It's nice to see everybody and looking forward to this weekend in Belbrook. I live out in the township, so I'll be hanging in, but it's great. I'm just here to update city council and the community about the Belbrook Senior Center. I know there's still many people out there that aren't even aware that we have a senior center. The Council on Aging is the entity that operates that and so we're very pleased to, I believe, we've been in Belbrook for about 11 years with the center. It's at the Educational Service Center and we're in the, for those of you who've been around a long time, in the old library, so we have space there. Actually, last week, we just hosted the Belbrookshire Creek Community Member and we actually have people from other communities that come over for some of our activities. There's no membership fee dues or anything like that. Every once in a while, there might be an activity that there's a small cost for supplies or something, but for the most part, it's all at no cost. It's funded by the Senior Services Levy that the council administers and we have a portion that goes to the Belbrook community for the senior center. First thing I want to comment on is hopefully all of you who are here and are watching this have noticed that in front of that building, we now have a sign. And I want to thank the city council for your support of that and of course, the zoning commission. I have our, I know you won't be able to see this, but we have a newsletter that goes out for the senior center every couple of months and our lead article has a picture of that sign, so we're very proud of that. We've been working on that for a long, long time and so it's great for, and direction's important. Everyone still isn't going to notice it, but we could at least say, hey, look for the sign. So again, we appreciate your support on that. Some of the programs that we have at the senior center, we have, some of our most popular are going to be Friday night. We do have euchre. People come in just to spend time together. Socialization is so important for us of any age, but definitely as we get older, the statistics and repercussions of isolation are significant. So the more we can encourage people to be around others and enjoy people's company, the better. We have two different yoga classes that meet at the senior center. A Friday one is a chair yoga and Monday, we have a more traditional yoga. We do tai chi. We have a local bridge group that meets there. We have a book club that comes in. We have an afternoon, Thursday afternoons, we have kind of open hours for games. So we have quite a very popular group of mahjong players. Some of you may be familiar with that particular game. Often, we have a luncheon learn on a Monday afternoon, so we either bring in some food or maybe it's a carry-in and different topics in terms of education. And in fact, we have one coming up next Monday at noon at the senior center, again, open to anybody who would like to come. And our topic is social security and Medicare, which most of us are interested in at some level. And we're just getting subway from here in town and we have Teresa Busher from the Social Security Administration who will be there and Susan Allen from the council team who's our benefit specialist, just talking about the different components of both the benefit and the program of Medicare. Many of you may be aware that we're coming up on open enrollment for Medicare. So for those folks who are 65 and better, who are enrolled in that program, it's time for us to start looking at your options for 2020. And that is a service that the Council on Aging provides. But it doesn't matter if you come to us. We just want you to talk to somebody to do a review of your plan, options, your parents, your neighbors, your aunts and uncles, whomever it may be. Because the plans change every year, our needs change every year. And as I commented to the chamber on Thursday, those of us who have partners and spouses, you don't pick those individuals by what your health insurance benefits need to be. So you want to make sure you both have your plans reviewed. So, and I did bring a few flyers that I can leave in the back in case any council individuals or people in the audience would like to take that. I did have a gentleman already ask, hey, can I have one of those? So, because he's closing in on his Medicare age, so that's great. But it's just so important and it's very confusing and it doesn't matter how many IQ points we have, it's very difficult to follow and that's why the council provides that service. We try to add programs and services to the senior center. I know later in the month, we are having an art class, a watercolor class. That'll be the first time that we've done something like that, so we have, I believe it's almost full, so that's great. We have an artist from over in the Spring Valley area who's going to be sharing her time and talents with us. But the other thing I wanted to mention is that we're also in the process of doing an activity and interest survey. Just getting anyone's input again from the Belbrookshire Creek community. Again, if you're 50 and better and you're willing to just share any thoughts, whether you attend the senior center or not, what might cause you to come out? What schedule would work best for you for programs? What interests do you have? And so we have a paper version of that that can be mailed out. Or if you go to the Council on Aging's website, which is www.gccoa.org, there's a link to the survey and you can go ahead and just do that online. It's just, again, a way for us to gather information from the community to see what we can be doing, what we can be doing better. Is there something that we're offering that maybe is kind of outdated because our interests change and what have you? But there's a lot going on there. I welcome everyone to come out. We do have a 15-hour-a-week senior center associate, Lynn Wicker, who's on our team. And then Tim Bricky, who's our senior center liaison, who worked with all the senior centers in Green County. He spends quite a bit of time there as well, so some great people taking care of you there. But definitely a wonderful group of people who are regularly participating in activities. So that's, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk. But does anyone have any questions or comments?
You said you're located where the old library is? If anybody doesn't know where the old library is, where is that?
Right, so it's 3757 Upper Belbrook Row. So it's in between the high school and the stadium.
And the educational center.
Yeah, Educational Service Center. So it's been a great, great location for us, a nice partnership with the schools for us to have space there.
Any other questions, the council?
I'd just like to make a comment. One of the important things I think that you do is go over insurance policies with people. That can be tough because sometimes they're written and they're hard to understand and they always change.
Not sometimes.
All the time.
And again, you know, I think there are a lot of people that think, I should be able to understand this. I shouldn't have to ask for help. But again, you could have a PhD in all sorts of things and it wouldn't matter. It's very complicated. And it's always better to sit down and talk to somebody, again, who's objective, because you know, we don't sell insurance, we don't get any kind of commission, so we are objective. I'd rather sit down with someone who tells me, yep, you're in good shape, you're on the right path, versus am I, am I not? And then find out down the road, well, maybe I should have made a change.
Having Teresa over there from the Social Security Office, she's excellent and brings things right down to a level that, you know, our citizens and parties will be able to know what to do, what not to do when going to the Social Security and applying for it and getting the various steps that they have.
And she makes it fun, which is kind of hard.
Yeah, she does.
So she's already made her fun and it doesn't really go together, but she definitely makes it.
Yeah, she does.
Personally, I had to, because I was at the chamber meeting and I asked her a question because we're going out of the country in October. And I said, how does that work? And she said, you need to buy travel insurance because Medicare, Social Security does not cover anything outside the country. So we could have been out of the country and had an issue and been in real serious trouble.
And you don't know what you don't know. And what I always tell folks and families, especially whether it's related to home care, hospitalization, whatever coverage, just you can't make any assumptions.
Right.
It may seem like it should be, but that doesn't mean it is. So let's sit down and figure it out. Thank you again.
Anything else, the councilman?
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Karen. Appreciate it. We have no public hearings tonight. The next is introduction of ordinances. Ordinance number 2019-14, Councilman Edwards.
Thank you, mayor. Ordinance number 2019-14 and ordinance amending ordinance 2018-6 to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for 2019. Whereas the city of Belbrook adopted a 2019 annual budget based on the best information available at the time and whereas additional costs have or will occur in some light items, which requires the amendment of various appropriation levels. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains Section 1 that the 2019 appropriation levels and several of the funds listed below be amended as follows. And what follows is a chart of all of the different funds and I'll just read the totals and I'm sure city manager can go into the details as to which funds were affected. But the 2019 appropriation, the total was 6,716,274, have total revisions of 171,637. So the amended appropriations for 2019 are 6,887,911. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. Looks like the two areas are community environment section and also in our street fund. Maybe you can highlight the details on that.
Yes, those are the two largest. So we had the general fund affected, the street fund, fuel system fund, waste and water funds. So the community environment is what's known as our planning and zoning department. So when we lost Don Buechek, he was paid out of water and admin. And when we hired Jeff, Jeff is paid out of community environment. So there were some additional expenditures there that weren't budgeted for. So we'll save money in the other departments, but I didn't adjust anything negatively yet, reducing anything yet. I'll wait and do that at the end of the year. So we had that and the other large one was two different engineering studies that needed to be done related to streets. The one was Little Sugar Creek and the other one was the Franklin Street Bridge Project, which all came before council. So those two engineering projects were not budgeted for at the beginning of the year. And then we had a small repair to our fuel system that we didn't expect, which we will get some money back from the schools for that. They actually pay 70%, so that's part of our share. There was actually two repairs. And then the waste and the water fund, those were the payouts of one employee that left that had been with the city for a very long time. So some of those things you just can't predict.
Any questions, the council? This is kind of one of those routine items that we go through several times a year.
I think the bridge and the sidewalk repairs is something we didn't even talk about until after first year. So that was kind of after the budget was already.
Yeah, both of those grants were applied for, I think, one was in the spring and then the other one, I think, was early summer.
Yeah.
And may I ask quickly, as a new guy, the fuel system, the city have its own fueling for vehicles?
We do. It's behind fire station 22 up on West Franklin Street. And the schools pay 70% of the share and we pay 30% just because that fuels all of their buses. So they use quite a bit of diesel fuel and we use gasoline and a small bit of the diesel fuel, so.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? We have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2019-14.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mr. Edwards to introduce ordinance 2019-14 and ordinance amending ordinance 2018-6 to adjust the city of Belbrook appropriations for 2019 was seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beltheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwaller?
Yes. That concludes our introduction of orders. It says we do have two resolutions this evening. The first being Resolution Number 2019-BB. Councilwoman Seager Lawson, please.
Resolution Number 2019-BB, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Whereas this council, in accordance with the provision of law, has previously adopted tax budget for the next succeeding fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2020. And whereas the Budget Commission of Green County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this council, thereon to this council, together with an estimate of the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this council and what part thereof is without and what part within the 10 mil tax limitation. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1 that the amounts and rates is determined by the Budget Commission and its certification be and the same are hereby accepted. Section 2, that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said city the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the 10 mil limitation as attached here too. Section 3, that the clerk of this council be and she is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the county auditor of said county. Section 4, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. And then attached to this is the official documentation of certifying the tax levies in the amount of $2.9 million. That is outside the limitation and inside the 10 mil limitation is $538,500. So the tax budget came before council in July. They gave us the amounts of taxes that would be levied in 2020. And so those were just inputted into a budget, which is the first pass of the budget that we do. And so this also serves as our estimated revenues for the year, our first certificate of that. So this is just certifying those rates that were already given to us and incorporated.
Any discussion, mugs, council? Do you have a motion for Resolution Number 2019-BB?
I believe that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-BB.
Thank you. A second?
A second.
Thank you.
A motion was made by Mrs. Seager Lawson to adopt Resolution 2019-BB, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beltheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwaller?
Yes. Our last resolution for this evening is Number 2019-CC. Councilman McGill, please.
Thank you, mayor. The city of Belbrook Resolution 2019-CC is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for Bridge Inspection Program Services. Whereas the city of Belbrook of Green County, Ohio, is here and after referred to as a local public agency, per N, the LPA. And whereas the city of Belbrook, LPA, has been determined the need for described project, Bridge Inspection Program Services, including but not limited to, bridge load rating calculation, scour assessments, bridge inspections and fracture critical plan development. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves Section 1 that being in the public interest, the city of Belbrook, LPA, gives consent to the director of transportation to complete the above described project. Section 2, that the city of Belbrook, LPA, shall cooperate with the director of transportation and the above described project is filed. The state shall assume and bear 100% of all the cost of Bridge Inspection Program Services requested by the city and agreed by the state. Eligible bridge inspection services are described in the consult's scope of services task order contract, Exhibit A. The LPA agrees to pay 100% of the cost of those features which are not included in Exhibit A. Those features may include but not limited to, the purchasing and erecting the recommended weight limits, posting signs, implementation of critical finding reports such as partial or total bridge closures, the implementation of the scour plan sections. When recommendations affect public safety, ODOT expects full implementation by the LPA. Starting in the October 2019, the FHWA requires installing weight limits, posting signs within 30 days from the official date of the approved recommendation. Timely implementation is essential to the success of the program. Section 3, that the city of Belbrook, LPA, agrees that all right-of-way required for the described project will be made available in accordance with the state federal regulations. Section 4, that Melissa Dodd, city manager of the city of Belbrook, LPA, is hereby empowered on behalf of the city of Belbrook, LPA, to enter into contracts with the director of transportation, which are necessary to complete the above described project. Section 5, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon adoption. And I think this goes to our standard time with the ODOT where every two to three years, they come through and they do a critical inspection on the bridges themselves for structural integrity.
Every three years, yes.
Every three days.
And they pay for this 100% unless there would be something that would need to be done by the city that they would have to come back and notify us of. So at this point, we don't anticipate anything, but that could always change.
Any more discussion, council? Do you have a motion regarding Resolution Number 2019-CC?
I will put that motion into effect, mayor, but we accept Resolution 2019-CC.
Thank you. A second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Forrest.
Mr. McGill made a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-CC, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contact with Ohio Department of Transportation for Bridge Inspection Program Services. This was seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Dr. Van Beltheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwaller?
Yes. That concludes the legislation for this evening. Next is the city manager report.
So two big things. The kindness symbol that the city council adopted at the last meeting was also adopted at the September 5th meeting of the Green County Commissioners, which is pretty cool. So they did that at their meeting and their administrator said that they've got a lot of ideas that they're going to use to incorporate that, so that's exciting. So the next big piece is September 14th, which is this Saturday. There are a number of things going on in the community. First thing in the morning will be the Brook Mills 10K. There's an 8:00 AM kids fun run. That's a 1K that's associated with that. And then at 8:30 AM, then there's a 10K. And the start and finish line is going to be on Southeast Street over here. So it's going to run up, down Franklin, up Little Sugar Creek, to Sable Ridge, back up through Kensington and around those neighborhoods up kind of near Stephen Bell and then it's going to come back. So there will be some delays. I've posted on the city website, the course map and all of the roads are listed that will be affected. So the 10K will be from about 8:30 AM until 10:00 AM. So it's going to be a bit of an inconvenience for people during that time, but hopefully it's going to be a benefit to the community. We're going to have 300 runners through the community, which is really great for a first year. So it's going to sell out. And so there was one concern that was brought to my attention is the vineyards has one way in, one way out, which isn't great design for a platte. But with that being said, Little Sugar Creek, we were going to close it down just because that road is so curvy and having runners in traffic is just not a great safety situation at all. So we're going to meet in the morning and see if maybe, it might be staggered, people getting out, but you won't be able to go south on Little Sugar Creek, but you could go out north. So like I said, the course map and all the roads affected are all online. We will keep traffic open on 7/25, one way going eastbound. So runners will be going westbound in the westbound lane and then the eastbound lane will remain open to traffic and then you'll just kind of have to jig jog around the center of town for a little bit. So Be Well Belbrook is the health and wellness event that'll be going on from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM. We'll have the mobile mammography unit, kids activities, health-related vendors. The farmer's market is also going to be going on. There's going to be fitness demos every 30 minutes. We are borrowing the Lions Club stage and that will be set up in front of our building. So you'll have fitness demos happening and then the kids area right next to it, which will be convenient. So I'm hoping for a really nice day. The weather looks like it's going to be great. We'll also have the farmer's market going on at the same time in the same place that it normally is from 9:00 to 1:00. And then from 4:00 to 8:00, we're going to have the second Saturday street fairs, the last one of the year is happening at the Plaza. And at 6:00 PM, the Optimist Club is doing their hometown heroes and they honor local police, fire and veterans. So that'll be a nice presentation for folks to attend to. So that's a great event, family-friendly, food trucks. They're going to have two trucks there. So it's going to be an all-day thing downtown, which is going to be great. But one of the things I think is worth noting is the Be Well Belbrook event that we're doing. I had my first cost incurred for that today and it was printing postcards and it was $25. So all of that was just time that I spent outside of most of my normal day, planning this stuff. So the city really hasn't spent anything. Everything has been given to us, loaned to us, free of charge. So we try to do a lot with a little. So I think that it's worth noting that the city spent $25 on this whole event.
And this is the very first time we've ever had this.
Very first time, yep. Hoping that it goes well and that it's an annual thing and I can give it to the revitalization committee and they can make it bigger and better. I'll get it off the ground and pass it off. So that's it.
Anything else? Thank you. Nice report. Any comments or questions for the city manager?
I just got a question. We're going to have the soccer tournaments this year, do you think?
They are. There's one in September and there's one in October. And I'm not sure of the dates off the top of my head, but yes, it's the Ohio Fusion Soccer Club. So they've got a website and the dates are up, but it's late September and early October are the ranges for those. But yeah, those are both going to bring in thousands.
I know they like their facilities here.
Yeah.
They appreciate it. Are they going to ask for volunteers again, do you think?
I assume. I've been in touch with the organizer, Cheryl, and she hasn't asked me yet, but I'm sure as it gets closer that she'll put a call out and I can pass that on.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments, the city manager?
Congratulations for all that. Thank you.
You'd be glad when it's over, too, right?
Yeah, I will. It's going to be a long day.
But you're not moving that weekend?
No, I'm not moving that weekend. That worked out.
Good. Okay, committee reports. Service?
No service report tonight.
Safety?
I just got one thing. This time of year, some of the paving from the county and different places, they do this, chips they put on the roadways. Sometimes lawn mowers, if you throw your debris into the street, can cause some hazards. Just, this is mainly for motorcycles. Be careful this time of year. It seems like, I just noticed that, especially if you throw your clippings in the street, there's all kinds of stuff. When you're on a motorcycle, that can not be so good. And if you see anything, you know, if you can't handle it, report it. We'll get it cleaned up. Just try to, you know, be aware of any things that you think might be dangerous. You know, gravel trucks sometimes spill gravel, especially around areas of stop signs and street lights and stuff. If you see that, report it so we can try to avoid somebody from getting hurt. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Forrest. Financing audit tonight will be my official last report. We are going to name a new finance committee chairperson this evening. I will have nothing to report. Community affairs?
The only thing I have is the opening on the planning board that is up on the website and applications are being accepted through September 13th, at which time we will call people in for interviews and select a person to replace Dr. Van Beltheisen, who we snatched from them. So that's it.
Thank you, Elaine. Brings us to old business. First item is selection of deputy mayor. Since I was appointed mayor on June 18th, we have not had a deputy mayor on council. And per our charter, the deputy mayor is to be appointed once we are elected, once we first have a full council. With Councilman Van Beltheisen joining us August the 26th, tonight is the first night we have a full council before us. So one of our first orders of business is to elect a new deputy mayor. We have any nominations for a deputy mayor, please?
I nominate Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Donick. We have a second?
A second.
Any other nominations? I declare the floor closed. We please have the vote.
A motion was made by Mrs. Seager Lawson to appoint Mr. McGill as the deputy mayor, and this was seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
I'll abstain.
Dr. Van Veldheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schwalter?
Yes. Welcome, Don. You're now the new deputy mayor, and your seat will be reassigned at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Our next item is the standing committee designations, and I'll refer this to our clerk of council to go through the appointments going forward.
All right. When Mr. Schwalter became the mayor, then his role changes, and that created openings on the council committees. So, discussion was made among the council members who would like to fill in those spots. So, I'll just announce who's on which committee from now on. The finance audit committee, the new chairperson for that committee is Mr. Edwards. Also on the committee is Mrs. Seager Lawson and Dr. Van Veldheisen. The safety committee, the chairperson is Mr. Greenwood, and also on that committee are Mr. McGill and Mrs. Mittelstetter. Community affairs is chaired by Mrs. Mittelstetter and also consists of Mr. Edwards and Mr. McGill. And the service committee is chaired by Mrs. Seager Lawson and also includes Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Van Veldheisen.
Thank you very much. Do we need a motion for the appointed?
No.
So, now the committees are full, and the positions are full. Thank you. We do have new business before us tonight. First up is Chad Clemmons, lot request information. Mr. Clemmons, welcome. The lectern is yours.
I was proposing a rezoning, a plot, a lot of ours, back to Sugar Creek. It's up there in Highview Terrace. It was originally Sugar Creek at the time. We plotted it off to Bel Brook Lot 37A, back to Bel Brook, just right there on the annexation line.
Yeah.
And what it is, there's 30 to 40 feet of fall there when you pull into Highview Terrace. It's pretty much an unbuildable lot. Lots to the left of it, we own. It's got power lines, gas easements, stuff like that. We were trying to propose to put it together. So, this lot, I was going to do for myself, and you're going to have to dump a lot of money into it to get a switchback driveway to even work in this lot.
Through the train?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's a pretty, I mean, I got the topo lines here. I think it's 35, 40 feet. If we can push the house over to the left, almost into that Sugar Creek line, I think I could get that driveway to work to access it. Sugar Creek's already approved of it. We're kind of waiting for you guys to approve or sign off, or whatever we got to do.
Why does it need to be one or the other? Or why did we push it the one way, and now we're pulling it back?
The lot to the left is Sugar Creek. But this lot here, it's a pretty big lot, but it took this literally 30, 40 feet of fall. So, in order to get the house fit, you got to have this really, we call it switchback driveways. And with that slope, this lot's almost unbuildable. So, the further we could push it left, if you're looking at Highview Terrace, pulling it toward Sugar Creek, if we push the house further left, we might be able to get this driveway to actually be accessible to drive up into the lot. So, the Sugar Creek lot will help. And this lot was Sugar Creek at one time, and we plotted, we zoned it back off to Bel Brook. Now, we're trying to get this one back over.
I'm sorry, I still don't understand why it needs to be one or the other.
So, why can't you stay in Bel Brook? Why can't you stay in Bel Brook?
Well, the zoning, I got some stuff here. This might help. I don't know if it'll help or not, but this is what I was trying to get at. This is all easement stuff here. This is a lot. See these topo lines? There's almost 40 feet of fall. If we keep the house into here, I might be able to get this driveway to work.
So, you can't put the house here if this is Bel Brook and this is Sugar Creek? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you can't build a house on both. Yeah, it's got to be one or the other.
I can't.
So, this avoids having a house that's in two different places, basically.
Yeah, one township, one city.
So, but you didn't answer my question. Why aren't you choosing Bel Brook over Sugar Creek? We already accepted you into Bel Brook.
Why do we already accept it? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Well, because that lot to the left, on that red line, is Sugar Creek.
So?
So.
Sugar Creek's along, all the way around us.
I know. I just, you're saying, why can't we make that Bel Brook?
No, why can't you make the lot that you're wanting to build on, make it Bel Brook? So, did you stay in, because the rest of the plat is in Bel Brook?
Right. The lot is on Bel Brook, but the other part I'm trying to make fit is Sugar Creek. So, I'll have to zone that back, too. The only way to make that work is if I would, I don't know. That's what we're trying to do. If we make this all Sugar Creek, because all that other lot to the left, it's all Sugar Creek.
I guess what she's asking is, why can't you just make it all Bel Brook and go toward the Sugar Creek town and tell them?
And tell that lot I'm proposing and move that to Bel Brook, which we're trying to get at.
Yeah.
So, this will be the only lot in the development that would be in the township, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Melissa, what's our process for this, then?
So, this is unique, obviously, because it's basically a reverse annexation, which is almost unheard of for a city to give land to a township, revert land back to a township that was once acquired. Usually, cities acquire land from townships. They don't give it to townships.
Right.
So, it's a unique proposition. So, how this would technically work, we would have to work through that. We didn't do a lot of research on the logistics of it until we figured out if council wanted us to go that far.
Does it cause problems?
It's not common.
That you would have only one lot and a whole development that's in a different township than the city?
I think more than anything, it's principle.
So, what does that have to do with it?
It's just principle of annexation, reverse annexation. The city giving land to the township, which is not typical.
We did all the planning and zoning and back and forth and back and forth on this lot.
We should get the tax revenue.
We should get the tax revenue thrown out. I don't like it going to the township.
And I think it's strange.
Has everyone looked at the plans? I think we had them in our package at one point. I don't think we had them in this month's package.
I didn't include it in this one. It was the last one.
I guess from a logistical standpoint, it makes sense what you're trying to do. The question is, do we want to vote to give up the tax revenue off of our land to Sugar Creek Township? And, you know, maybe if there's a legitimate reason why the township should get this piece of property, we don't, then that's fine. But I'm not hearing anything that says...
What's your reason for wanting it to be in Sugar Creek?
That lot might be an unbuildable lot without doing this.
But why couldn't it be built?
But why can't you?
The whole thing, why can't the whole thing be built?
Push the other half in.
Push the other half to the city.
The gas easements or the power easements that are there, I don't know. That's something we want to do.
Maybe you check on that and see what's, maybe look at that. It sounds like we've not really looked at that a lot. I'd like to drive back and look at the train to make sure I understand what's going on. And then I think maybe if you could present the topo reports, we could look at that and then see if there's any reason why it would not work to go back and put the lot in the city above it that's currently that portion of township.
I don't know what the easements would have anything to do with it. I don't care if they...
That's sections in Sugar Creek. We went to Sugar Creek. They said, yeah, if you could go talk to Bel Brook, if you could. They didn't really care. And then that's why we're here now.
It would be strange. I think if you did build on that house and you called the police and fire, who would show up? I mean, we'd have to...
You'd tell them, you'd tell, we coordinated with Sugar Creek, and they'd have the address.
I think that would be...
They'd have the address picked up and who it is. Does there plenty more need to get back on this, or?
Well, since it's such a unique situation, I mean, it would eventually go through planning board because it needs to start there, kind of like a lot combination, things like that.
Well, when it comes back to us, planning board will give us a recommendation, right?
Yeah.
And you'll make sure that planning board knows what our concerns were preliminarily.
I mean, tonight was just an introduction.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think it goes to planning board. It goes to the process from there, and then we'll make a determination.
And Chad, I don't know. I can't speak your way. I'm not against it. I just want to know why we want to do it from a financial standpoint. If there's some engineering reason or, you know, if there's some reason why it shouldn't be in Bel Brook, then give us those reasons.
Okay. Yeah, just more, just like I said, it's more, I don't know, some of that power line stuff. We own this lot. The easement stuff was unbuildable stuff anyways. And obviously, we own all that acreage to the left of it. There's 30-plus acres all over there on our Sugar Creek. So, just something we're trying to make work with this lot, because we don't know if it's ever going to fully be buildable. It just might just sit there.
So, maybe next meeting, we bring some more detail. I can bring process. He can bring graphics for everybody to understand fully, and then we could go from there.
But I think the house, but all the houses in that development are in Bel Brook. I don't...
Right.
I think my initial reaction, I can't speak for anyone else, is that I'd rather it come to Bel Brook than to go to Sugar Creek.
Yes.
That's my...
We brought that lot in because that was an oddball lot, and I think it was on the fringe, and so we brought that into Bel Brook early on in the process.
Yeah, to help out the things. So, I'm not willing to give it back unless there's some compelling reason to do so.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, just we've on the planning board done quite a few rezonings for you over the last four or five years. And I agree with Mr. Edwards right off. If we already took the time to bring it into Bel Brook to bring the other one in rather than give it back. And the other issue we talked about before, too, was tax dollars.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Well, let's go through and understand what the processes on this, since it's kind of a maiden voyage, and visit it again. Does that sound good?
Okay.
Chad, is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Good for you, Tom.
Thank you.
Next item is our 2020 budget schedule. This is now getting to be budget season.
So, I just put a draft based on what we did last year into the packet. There's one tricky date. November 12th is actually a Tuesday. November 11th, which would be our regular Monday meeting, is Veterans Day. So, if council would, at the end of the year, we really have a tight schedule. So, the second meeting in December is the 23rd. So, that second meeting in December always bumps right up against the holiday. So, this is in line with what we did last year, with the exception of the 12th being a Tuesday. So, if everybody would be okay with that, that's what we could plan on. Or if anybody has any other suggestions, how to change it up.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that. I'd rather do it that way, get it done than have to get it finished around the end of the year.
Right.
Okay. So, October 20th will be our first meeting?
Yes.
And that'll be Administration Service Department.
Yep.
Okay, next we have the sidewalk regulation discussion. This is something, this is the first time we're seeing this, correct?
Correct. We have no sidewalk regulations. So, in our ordinances, there's a statement about responsibility of sidewalks, which is the property owners, but there are no regulations. So, if we are to tell somebody that they need to repair or replace a sidewalk for various reasons, we need to have reasons. As in, you know, it has cracks that are greater than this width. It's, you know, upheaved by this amount. In order to tell somebody to fix it, we have to tell them why it needs fixed, and we don't have those regulations in place. So, this is actually, was actually modeled off of Sugar Creeks, which is very well-written. So, we took that and made a few changes to it, but we just wanted council to see this, to be able to give input on it. And if council is favorable towards adopting these, then we could bring it in an ordinance format at one of the next meetings. So, it's just really important to make sure that we have something to point to when we need to ask somebody to repair or replace a sidewalk, and we don't have that right now.
What have we done in the past? I know we've always repaired sidewalks and had people do it. I mean, we just...
Well, from what I can gather, what's been done in the past is letters have went out to property owners to say, you need to repair your sidewalks. And service department would go out, and they would mark them with colored paint. So, it was basically on the homeowner to just figure it out on their own. And so, that's fine if, you know, the whole thing just needs to be replaced. But if somebody has a slight upheaval that needs to be ground down, we have to be able to say this is outside of standard because it's three inches, and it's not allowed to be higher than two inches. We don't have those standards to be able to point to, to be able to say that this is outside of those standards. So, regulations are a good guideline just to have some sort of framework to work from if we have to ask anybody to repair, replace anything. So, that's what's been done in the past, and the city has never went and fixed things and assessed property taxes, which we have the ability to do. But, you know, it's not really fair to do something like that if you don't have standards in the first place, to say you were outside of that.
So, process-wise, we wouldn't be changing anything? We just would be documenting why?
We would be, yes, just adding what our expectations are with our sidewalks.
Yeah, putting it in. Because before, the service just went out, and if it was, it had to be pretty bad before they cited it to be fixed. Little things they kind of let until they got worse. Because it's really, as you know, it's really tough to get a contractor to do, you can't find a contractor to do small cement jobs. So, that's another issue that we have to maybe concern ourselves with at some point.
So, we would mark it. We'd send them a letter. We'd say per our sections, blah, blah, blah. And then we would give them so much time to do it. And then if they didn't do it, then we would be able to find them. Is that what...
So, that's something that we need to work out moving forward. Regulations is the first step. You know, how do we want to proceed once we have regulations in place? That's, you know, that's another question because, like Mrs. Mittelstetter said, you know, it's hard to get those things repaired. And, you know, the city could get a better price on a contractor to come out and do all the small areas that, you know, the homeowners or property owners say, hey, add mine to the list, and then we could assess it to property taxes, or we could invoice them or something like that. So, that's just one of those things that we could possibly do. But, you know, we'll figure that out once we get there. But it's, we really can't ask anybody to fix anything without saying why it's not acceptable.
It has to meet these standards.
May I ask quickly, have we now, and in the past, have you had a regular inspection program, or has it been just city workers out, they notice it? And then with that, how many a year over the past few years? How many letters have gone out? Many, few?
I don't believe any have went out this year. It was, it did not appear to me that it was a very regular thing because none of the letters ever existed in this building. They were all maintained in the service department. And so, it was kind of hard to follow exactly, you know, what process, you know, they undertook with that. Because we have a new service director now, and he was supportive of having regulations and us actually coming up with a real, formalized plan that we can then communicate to people so that they know what to expect. So, I really don't know the answer to that because it dates me and the current service director.
We've kind of loosely interpreted some of these things, I think, and we've not done, I don't believe, consistently. But this is the same thing, like the tree branches hanging down on the sidewalks and some of those things. And we talk from time to time about trying to solidify some of that to go forward with very firm rules of engagement. I'm glad we're at least getting to having some plans. I'm going to read them and study them a little bit more to make sure I understand, but it looked to be pretty comprehensive. It probably makes sense. I know in our neighborhood, we had some sidewalk that was pitted. And I see it's got to be 25% or more. So, right now, it's questions, how much pitting means you have to replace that square. So, it probably makes sense to have some of that in code. So, the next step on this is to...
We would bring it in ordinance format to incorporate into our municipal code.
What do you do in the case of a tree in the middle of the sidewalk?
That's a good question. I'd have to ask my service director about that.
Because there's some down there. The other thing is, the width is supposed to be four feet. We have some sidewalks in the Old Village that's not. Is that something you're going, should we make them carry out, put a four-foot in? I mean...
That might have to be an exception for that.
Yeah. Yeah, in the Old Village, that might just need to be an exception. It could be as easy, and I didn't look to see if that exact statement is in here, but it could be as easy as saying, or of matching width of current existing sidewalk, you know? So, I can take a look at that.
Yep.
If a property owner wanted to dispute their sidewalk, would that go to the BZA?
Property Maintenance, Property Review Commission, yes.
So, I guess if there was something like that in there, we could, common sense, say, we're not going to make you rip up your sidewalk because they're three, three feet instead of four.
The other question, Melissa, is there are places where there should be sidewalks that's not? Are there sidewalks that don't have to be there? I mean...
We are dealing with that right now, actually. There's a, there's...
Downtown's a mess.
Well, there are a couple of developments that don't have connections. The landings to Ridgeway, there are two sections, one on each side of the road that don't connect. There's a couple in Highview Terrace where somebody bought and built a house, and then, you know, then their builder left, and then they bought the lot next to it. and then they bought the lot next to them. And there was no builder because the builder was already gone. And so then that sidewalk didn't get put in. So some of the newer developments, we're finding little gaps that we're trying to, to work through. But yeah, I mean, ultimate connectivity is the goal. But you know, some of these strange things that have just kind of happened, you gotta figure out how to best work through them.
And, and a lot of the flats that were built in the 50s and 60s were specifically designed without sidewalks.
Yeah.
And you can't go back and tell people they have to spend $25,000 to put in a sidewalk.
We wouldn't do that.
No. The intention is just so that the sidewalks that exist are gonna be maintained appropriately. And we have standards that we can point to to say, this is why your sidewalk doesn't, doesn't meet the recommendations. Because we actually have recommenda, or regulations.
And part of the study that just went in on our whole downtown revitalization, sidewalks were a big issue. Sidewalks and curbs.
They were, absolutely.
Yeah, we've had complaints about sidewalks in the past. So we should have a standard to hold them to.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? So our next step will be see this as an ordinance? Last item in new business is the special event permit discussion.
Okay, so this is something else that we thought was important. Just because the amount of special events that we have have increased quite a bit. It's, it's just a good way to document, you know, who's in charge, what's going on, what's their contact information, and something that we can just be made aware of and be able to disseminate internally. So it, there's, there's an actual permit that you would have to, uh, complete so that we know who the contact person is. There's a release of liability for the city to hold harmless for any events that would happen. And then there's an actual ordinance section that has been written, which I noticed something today that would need to be changed. But it just basically goes through, you know, the application, signage, liability insurance. It, it goes through a number of different things. The only thing that I noticed that needs to be corrected or included, there's an omission with signage, which is L1 placement and size. It's saying that if there is an event that up to four signs could advertise the event in the community. And it, it states that it's restricted to four locations. So I just, I want to clarify that it also says authorized locations. So are those predetermined authorized locations? If that's the case, it needs to be clarified. I was just, I haven't read this in a, in a week or so. So I noticed that and it was a little unclear to me. So are these already, you know, pre-stated, you know, the north, south, east, west entrances to the community? Or is that to be determined or worked out with administrative staff? So that's, that's one thing I want to clear up. So this is just internal documentation and approval of events that are happening so that we can, we are aware and we can make all staff aware. And it's just streamlined, coordinated. Everybody that needs to know knows what's happening when. Cause it affects the police department for their response possibly. Block parties right now, um, it's, it's just, it's an informal process that works through the police department. It's just nice to understand who's doing what and when in case we need to have communication. The car department needs to know about these things too. And they typically haven't been involved in notification whenever something is happening. So it's, it's good for the first responders to know what's happening in the community so that they can be aware of these types of events. So that's really what the intention is.
I have a question. Is this going to involve garage sales?
No.
Okay. A specific entrance to me is the garden club plant sale on school property. One Sunday, one Saturday morning a year. Is that going to be, they're gonna have to go through this? It's on.
We're really worried about things that are going to be blocking traffic on, entering onto sidewalks, things like that that are going to possibly disrupt the common flow of people.
That seemed to be the intent.
That's what it is. And if that needs to be clarified, then we can do that.
I think we need to clarify that because that particular event invites the public, but it doesn't block traffic. There's, you know, it's, it's basically a garage sale. So any events like that.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to.
What is, what is your process and timeline for approving or disapproving these?
We probably should put a turnaround on there if there's not.
Or in some way, I mean, I'm not sure what, I can't think of an event that you would disapprove of, that there might be one.
Yeah.
How you notify them?
I'd just like my comment that the safety committee, um, had discussion and requests preserving alcohol to have training for the servers. And I talked to Melissa earlier, if we could, on this same form, just put a block, is alcohol going to be sold? They could check yes. And that, that would just let the police know. Make sure that we, uh, not that we're trying to deter anything like that. We just want to make sure people are safe in that area. I thought that'd be real simple, just a block check.
Good idea.
Good thought. Make it simple. And just people are aware and. Cause I don't want to see any of this stuff go away. I want some more of it.
Any more discussion from council? That brings us into an open discussion of council. Mr. Edwards?
Uh, I don't have anything tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood?
Uh, nothing, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor McGill?
Nothing, Mayor. Other than I look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you.
In my capacity.
Nothing more. I've said enough tonight.
Nothing, Mayor.
And I have nothing this evening, other than it's gonna be a big Saturday. So if you have time, make sure you find a way to downtown Belbrook. A lot of things going on.
Yep.
At this time, we open the, open discussion by the audience. Again, state your name, address, and you're entitled to three minutes to state your comments.
Been watching your meetings, so I couldn't prepare.
Will you decide you put that sign someplace where people can see it on the camera?
I want you guys to see it.
It has to be on camera too.
You got a little bit of hollering going on there.
Prepared you are.
Mrs. Middlestetter, before I begin, you rock. You did great tonight. That probably won't help you, but nevertheless. I have some things I want to pass out.
Let me give us your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. David Bucklewell, 126 Lower Hillside Drive, Belbrook, Ohio.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here. Take one, pass it. Appreciate it. And I'll try to be concise. The city's had a couple of thumples and needs to take time out to catch its breath. The first was the firehouse painting. For every person seen, excellent. Some were seen, they did not agree. It was put up impulsively and not well thought out. The artwork itself is amateurish and does not reflect well upon the business community in the old village. Looking at it, you'll see that detracts from two beautiful buildings that you decided in. The style of it, not the message, detracts from the business community, making it less desirable for future business growth. The city pulled it down as fast as it went up. Neither up or down has come with any explanations to who, what, where, and why. I suspect the city's in violation of its zoning code and has failed to enforce zoning on itself in the same way that it would enforce it upon others. Nothing that significant should go, should be put up unilaterally. The consultive approach that does not include the homeowners in the old village is deeply flawed. I fear the rush of bringing in new faces is being done by shoving aside the locals who live here. Also, the decision-making process should include the elected council. You're all here for a reason. One member of the council lives in the district, another's had a successful career and a flourishing business in advertising, communication, high-level business promotion and branding. And another was a business owner in the old village. Every single member of this council has a deep interest in the entire community and none were informed or consulted ahead of time. I knew about it before you did. Delegate is not to abdicate. I fully understand the words as well as the spirit of the charter. I believe that the staff may have overstepped given tensions, but nevertheless overstepped. I fear that this is now being fast-tracked to get zoning board approvals and authorizations doing an end run around the process. And the process has been fixed to obtain the desired result, outcome. I think this is true. I do think it's true. Looking, looking at the photo, and that's why I put it up there for you to look at. I think it detracts from the two buildings that we should be showcasing. The supporters love the message and I get that. The critics don't like the art and I get that too. In the end, I fear it will become a point of mockery. Public art of this quality should not be permitted in this particular prominent location. Xenia, for instance, has several beautiful displays of outdoor art. This is not beautiful. It's amateurish. And the people who painted it may take personal, may take this personal and they may take it in a personal affront to my remarks. I understand that. I would hope that they would not. None of them were professional artists. They should not have been asked to help under the circumstances. Next is the old Pennywood building that I want to talk about. Before I go to Pennywood building.
That's good enough for us though.
Look, you had this building and this building didn't always look like this. And this building got to this point by private sector investment. People coming in, fixing their gut. This spot is gonna be vacant. It may already be vacant. It's supposed to be vacant on September 7th, by the way.
You wait.
Pardon?
You wait.
Yes, sir. They got signs up saying it's gonna be vacant. You have two historical markers on either end of the building. And the bank, which I remember the original bank was much smaller. So Key Bank has made a major investment in Belbrook. And they're closing branches. All these banks are closing branches, but this bank hangs on in Belbrook.
David, you need to be at the microphone, please.
Yeah, the audience can't hear you. Sorry, good point, Lynn.
You can turn that picture around so it shows to the cameras. That would, that would be helpful. Then everybody could see it. There you go.
Got it?
Okay, next topic. Want to talk about the Pennywood building. You have a, a historical photograph of the Pennywood building from some statistics ago in the package I gave you. I was told by city officials several months ago that this property and a couple of other properties in town were being targeted for enforcement. The owners were called deadbeats. They were called deadbeats by the staff. They were called deadbeats by the consultant. He told me specifically in response to a question I asked him at the old village school. I've learned that the city is wanting to issue fines in excess to the owner of one of these properties in excess of $5,000. No one should be surprised if some of the items in the letter that the owner received are incorrect. Some are an overreach and some items are legitimate and need to be corrected. Things have been said that are not correct. Things have been said that are being fueled by secondhand knowledge. It is understandable if a business owner felt they could not get fair treatment from the city. In its revitalization effort, Belbrook has limited tools. And while enforcement is needed, the heavy hammer approach is not. Most business owners find working with government, frankly, government of any kind, be adversarial and confusing. The business world and government is two different worlds. You have the photos I've shared with you tonight. I'm asking that the request of the prosecutor be withdrawn and a more collaborative approach be used. We can resolve this locally. All of us in this room are neighbors. A successful outcome that's fair-minded and treats people with dignity without demonizing anyone is within our reach. No one's perfect and everyone can do better. If the zoning inspector and the manager have had, sorry, but.
Clock's running.
I know. And I'm sorry. But the zoning inspector, the manager have had difficulty following zoning regulations with this. The council should have some empathy for others who find government confusing and enforcement should be done with some insight. Now, before I leave, I want to pass this out on the circle of friendship. And I have three people that associate with the city who use that term with me. These, this, these are some alternative locations for your circle of friendship that might be more suitable.
Okay, one for everybody.
I'm not opposed to something going up there. I just think it should be done better.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your hospitality. Thank you for the use of city property.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to come up and address the council? Hearing none. This meeting is going to be terminated for purposes of viewing the audience, those in attendance here. As we're going to go into executive session to discuss a real estate transaction for Belbrook, ma'am. Can I have a motion for executive session, please?
Can move.
In a second.
Second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Middlestetter to end our interim executive session to discuss a real estate transaction. This was seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Middlestetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Dr. Van Belltheisen?
Yes.
Mayor Schweller?
Yes.
I also want to note that municipal attorney Stephen McQ is gonna be present.
Oh, yes. And the municipal attorney, Mr. Stephen McQ, will be present for that executive session.
There'll be no new business coming out of the executive session. That's conclusion. Thank you for attending tonight's audience. Louie, thank you very much.